Okay. All right. Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome. My name is Joe Riedel, and I serve as the Chair of the Shawnee Chamber of Commerce Legislative Committee. It's my honor to moderate today's forum. The Johnson County Public Policy Council, comprised of the 10 chambers of commerce serving Johnson County, developed today's questions focusing on business and community issues. We will begin candidate speaking order alphabetically and rotate throughout the forum. We will start with brief three-minute opening statements by each candidate, followed by our Q and A, where candidates will have a minute and a half to answer each question, and end with two minutes for each candidate for closing statements. Due to time constraints, there will be no follow-up questions, formal rebuttal time, or audience participation. So there will be no opportunity to ask direct questions up here at the time, but between forums, or maybe the candidates will be standing around, you'll have time to talk to them then. Now, let's get started. I'd like to ask the candidates to introduce themselves and give a brief background on themselves, organizations you have been involved with, and why you feel you're qualified to serve on the Alathis Shawnee City Council. So, back to the order, starting with alphabetical order, Mr. Jenkins.
Thank you. I just kind of put some notes together here so I could share with everybody a little bit of my background. My wife, Anne, and I and our five children and eight grandchildren have lived in Shawnee for 38 years. I served in the United States Army for six years, and then transitioned to the Army Reserves. While I was serving in the Army Reserve, my primary new career was with the Federal Emergency Management Agency. So you can say I worked concurrently in two careers. With the Army, I served as an infantry platoon leader, military intelligence officer, Special Forces 18th Commander, Civil Affairs Operations Officer, Military Police Battalion Commander, Commanding General Staff College Instructor, and Emergency Preparedness Liaison Officer for the 59th State Army. At FEMA, I spent most of my years in management role at the regional level here in Region 7, Kansas City, dealing with floodplain management, dam safety, earthquake hazard reduction program, disaster response and recovery, Chief of Operations, Emergency Preparedness Radiological Safety Program, and the establishment of a natural response framework. I served as a federal coordinating officer on two presidential disaster declarations and as deputy or operations chief on many others. I retired from FEMA in 2005 when the Army asked me if I would return to active duty to serve in the Middle East. I felt it was important to serve in that post-9/11 timeframe, and I did an additional four years of active duty with three deployments to Iraq and one to Afghanistan as an Army I concurrently served while doing all that, I was on the Northwest Advisory Board and the Board of Education, the Shawnee Planning Commission for 21 years, and then transitioned to city council for the last eight years. I have a passion for serving my country and my community, and it still drives me to make a contribution to my city. For any further details, I'd like you to visit my website, and you can get some real details on this if you want. It's ericjenkins@shawnee.com. I can't remember if it's a dot com. But I'd be happy for you guys to visit that, because there's some real details, and also a lot of details about what my priorities and things like that are. It's hard to put that on a card you pass out, so there's some additional information you could dig into if you want to take a look at that. But I just feel compelled to do this. I want to continue doing this because I think I've done some very, very good things for the city of Shawnee. I've got a lot of irons in the fire, and I'd like to see those things be accomplished and get done and brought to fruition. So I need some support to do that, so I'm asking for your support as we sit up here today. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Our next up, our next candidate for Ward Two, Reverend Murphy.
Thank you. I'm Jeannie Murphy. I am a proud Army brat, as we have always been known. During my father's 21 years of active duty, I lived everywhere from Long Island to the Hawaiian Islands and a number of places in between. So while Shawnee is not my hometown of birth, it has become, for the last 19 years, my hometown of choice. I came here to go to UMKC, and while I was still a student, I began my 30-year career with the Kansas City Ballet. I was a dancer, and then the wardrobe director and a costume designer. Because I multitask, while I was working at the ballet full-time, I began attending seminary, which put me in a field setting in a downtown homeless shelter, and in order to accomplish that, I was licensed as an emergency medical technician. So somehow I managed to put all of that into a four-year span. When I completed my seminary education and graduated from St. Paul's School of Theology here in Kansas City, I was ordained as a Presbyterian minister in the Presbyterian Church, USA. After that, I went on to St. Luke's Hospital, trained as a chaplain, and became board certified with the Association of Professional Chaplains. And to this day, I still volunteer with the ballet, with St. Luke's in their training program, and with the Association of Professional Chaplains. And when I'm not doing all of that, I still preach and do weddings and funerals and assist local churches. So doing all that, I went to work for the Sisters of St. Joseph of Carondelet. Some of you remember back when we had Carondelet health. I was the spiritual care director at a nursing home, and then went on to be the manager of spiritual care at St. Joseph Medical Center. So I am now retired technically from all of those things, while I still do them all. But I'm here today because I am running for city council, because I love all people. I have worked and lived in diverse settings for my entire life. I have worked with people from all backgrounds, all areas of the world, and recognize all of their needs in good times and bad times. So I'm really determined that everyone needs to be acknowledged and respected and seen as valuable members of the community, no matter how much they make, where they live, how they live. So I'm here to listen and respect others, and I'm here, hopefully, to return good nonpartisan governance to Shawnee.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Thank you both for providing a general overview and introduction. That will move into the moderated question and answer portion. And just a reminder, each candidate will have one and a half minutes to answer these questions, starting with you, Reverend Murphy. As a candidate, what are your top three policy issues?
First of all, housing. We have to focus on neighborhoods where everyone, from all backgrounds, have a place to live, and that's our young adults starting out, our families, and then our retirees like me, who all need someplace to live that is accessible and attainable here in Shawnee. Secondly, I have a commitment to maintaining high-quality services, keeping our streets safe, working on our infrastructure, and preserving our parks. I'm so excited. Go Spring Parks in my neighborhood is being redone right now. And I think we can do these things and keep taxes under control. And third, but this is most important for me, we have got to foster listening, clear communication, and collaboration. And this is among the city council, our dedicated staff, and all of our residents. Too often, I hear that the squeaky wheel is getting all the attention, and that takes attention away from everybody else. So we need to listen to all sides of the issues so that we can make Shawnee thrive for everybody.
Okay. Thank you. To you, Mr. Jenkins. What are your top three policy issues?
Well, the policy issue is what they usually are and what they should be. First of all, of course, is public safety. If you watch the television, find that public safety isn't doing so well across the country. There's a lot of areas where public safety has really been pretty much put in the tank. We're very strong on public safety here. It's one of my primary issues. We've hired six new policemen in the last couple of years, and we're staffing up fully, and I think it's a situation where I feel comfortable that we're at where we should be. I continuously communicate with the police chief, determine whether he has any needs or concerns that need to be addressed, and I constantly get back and know we're good, we're great, appreciate you guys, what you're doing, kind of comments from him. Secondly, of course, the second primary purpose of a city government is infrastructure and taking care of the infrastructure, and I think we've done a really good job in that as well. It's pretty easy to determine whether we've done that or not, just look around, drive the streets, check it out. You notice when you drive into Shawnee from another town, because our streets are flat, it's kind of interesting. You can actually tell when you hit Shawnee city limits. Overall, one of our big problems right now is our storm drainage. We did a hell of a lot of development in this community back 30, 40 years ago with those corrugated metal pipes, and those metal pipes are starting to fail. They only last 30, 40 years. That's the life expectancy of those. Now, we did put those pipes in there, but we're having to deal with the big problem of these pipes going bad pretty much all at the same time. So it's a pretty big issue, and we're trying to address that in the strongest way that we can. We've amped up the amount of dollars that's going toward that program, but we're not doing it blindly. We run video cams of each one of those pipes to determine which ones are in the most seriously bad condition and which ones are in less bad condition, so we can focus. Don't have a chance to say my third one, so time's up.
Okay. Real quickly.
Well, the third one's trying to take care of our taxpayers and our residential areas. They've been encroached upon. We have a couple of things that are really pernicious in our neighborhoods right now, one of those being something called, they're like mini hotels, where somebody will come in and take a house, typical Johnson County house, renovate it, put in six or seven bedrooms with individually teed locks, and rent it out to six or seven people, like an apartment. This causes huge problems for those people who live in those communities, in those neighborhoods, because they got 18 cars parked out front, and there's a much higher noise level. It's an R1 district. What are we doing there? Well, we went after that, and actually, we just got a court ruling on it that the judge refused to hear the complaints of the homeowner, the homeroom people that are doing this work. They're corporate. And so we won that one, so we're protecting our neighborhoods there. We're also trying to protect our neighbors from the Airbnb's and some of this other kind of stuff, because when you go out and you buy a home, you invest a lot of yourself and your family in that, and all your dollars, and we've got to take care of that. That has to be protected. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. On to the next question, and we'll stay here with you, Mr. Jenkins. What are your views on the value Shawnee businesses receive for their local tax dollars, and what changes, if any, would you propose to the city budget?
Well, for the most part, the businesses of Shawnee receive the same services with their tax dollars as the residents do for their tax dollars. Public safety, like I mentioned earlier, is a number one. It's kind of hard to do business in an area where you don't have good public safety. People don't want to, they'll be staying home, shopping on Amazon or something, rather than visiting your stores or establishments, because we've got to keep it good. We've seen what's happened to cities, those other cities, like I mentioned earlier, San Francisco and so on. It's a real problem. So the next great importance is the quality of infrastructure. I just mentioned that a little bit. Businesses can't thrive in an environment that does not maintain roads and bridges, good stormwater management, snow removal, and the other infrastructure needs. If you look around at Shawnee, you can see an emphasis on that, and I mentioned that as well. Lastly, I have supported and continued the establishment and substantial funding of the economic development team and the chamber. The outstanding performance of Anne Smith Tate and her team has been a vital link to further into our business community, and it manifests itself not just in business recruitment, but in business retention as well. This team has been an incredible partner with the business community, but also provides a bridge to the city government, the city staff, and furthering our mutual vision and objectives. And it's one thing I've gone to bat for these folks, they even asked for increasing their budget this year, and we got some. So it was good. Just for those that aren't aware of what we do in regards to this, is $499,000 from the 2024 budget for economic development, and for the visit to Shawnee, another additional $255,000 has been allocated to that. So we're really strong supporters of our business community and our primary form of reaching out to that. Also, just, it's important to note that in the last three years, we've reduced the mil levy on our property taxes by 3.5 mils, and that does impact on businesses and their cost and overhead. And we've done that in response to these rising property tax valuations.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Back to you, which I can repeat the question. What are your views on the value Shawnee businesses receive for their local tax dollars, and what changes, if any, would you propose to the city budget?
Well, like all of our citizens, our businesses really reap significant benefits from our taxes. We have well-maintained streets and infrastructure. We have brought good sidewalks and roads. We have looked at the issues of parking and traffic in downtown. All of that has helped our businesses. We also have, we all know, excellent fire and police. We have excellent safety and well-being, and they keep our town running smoothly. We are running well. We have a well-versed city staff. It's sad that we have lost so many of our city staff because they were keeping us on track, but we will stay on track, and we will recruit, and we will hire in the way that we need to, knowing that this is going to cost some extra money. It always does when you hire new people. We also have incentive programs, neighborhood revitalization, tax abatements, and downtown improvement grants. And I think we can use these wisely and attract new businesses to the right places. So I also look forward to speaking to more of our business owners. I've spoken to several that are in downtown, because I want to know how they experience what they're receiving and learn more about what their needs are for the future.
All right. Thank you, Reverend Murphy. And we're staying with you on question number three. The attraction of outside dollars in the form of tourism is a great way to stimulate the local economy. If you were elected, how would you work to attract new visitors to Shawnee?
Well, it's essential. We have to always attract visitors. It's part of what we do. And we have a comprehensive plan, Achieve Shawnee, and it had input from over 3,000 of our residents and neighbors. It gives us a clear blueprint as we create opportunities and amenities. Unfortunately, some on the council are not following the plan that they themselves voted for. We have the ability to continue to attract a wide range of activities, diverse restaurants, and unique shops. We've already begun with that dream of someday having the two riverfront parks. We have the Valley of Champions, which is flourishing with activities, and we have the growth of Shawneetown. To keep visitors coming, though, and to prevent them from spending all those dollars in neighboring cities, we have to invest in amenities that cater to the needs of the people. That might be family-friendly restaurants, additional hotels, or maybe someday when the riverfront parks are open, RV and camping areas, so that families can come and enjoy the recreation. And on a broader scale, we could be working with Mark and Johnson County to enhance public transportation that would help bring people into Shawnee and help them get around better.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Would you like me to repeat the question?
No, that's okay. I do, just a couple of side comments. I too was a military brat, so we share a lot in that. My dad was Air Force, I was in Army, so I lived all over the place, too. So we both came from the same place on that. It's interesting. And thanks for the endorsement of all the good things that are happening in Shawnee, because I think we're part and parcel for that, so I appreciate those kind comments about how well everything's actually going. The attraction of outside dollars from tourism, when I became engaged with Shawnee government, I conducted my own assessment of what Shawnee has to offer to make our city a destination for people outside of our city. My initial conclusion was we have two activities in Shawnee that create a draw, Shawneetown 1929 and the Valley of Champions. Much of my energy has been directed toward building upon those two attractions. We have acquired additional land in the Valley of Champions to allow for expansion of outdoor activities, including a new dirt bike course that will bring competitive meets to Shawnee, pickleball, and disc golf. We are looking at expansion of the hockey, ice hockey capabilities, and we partnered with Johnson County Park to do a huge upgrade and enhancement of the ball fields and the supporting infrastructure out there in the ball field. It looks like, it looks really great out there now, and we are making it even better. We continue to work with Shawneetown 1929 and have a strategic plan, which encompasses the addition of new buildings and added emphasis on the new buildings, such as the chapel and drugstore being interactive rather than simply displayed. We have a new visitor center and expansion plans as well. The council has gone out and hired a consultant that manages donation campaigns, and she's coming up pretty soon with her final report. What we're going to do is establish a program where people can donate to old Shawneetown. We think that's really going to help out a lot. I personally have been deeply involved in recreating downtown Shawnee to turn it into a destination location, and it's becoming one. We've made some great strides there, and many improvements that have been, that have already been approved, but are still in the process of being put into place, but you'll find those to be coming around real soon.
All right. Thank you. And staying with you, Mr. Jenkins, one you've been asked about quite a bit, I'm sure. With the announcement of the Panasonic plant neighboring DeSoto, how do you see Shawnee taking advantage of the ripple effect it will have on the surrounding communities?
Yeah, and some people may not agree with me on this, but I believe there will be some opportunity to capture some of the ripple effect of Panasonic plant, but it should be noted that we will be sharing that ripple effect with DeSoto, Udora, Lawrence, Alatha, KCK, Lenex, and perhaps a few more. I don't see a bonanza for Shawnee. However, success breeds success, and if Panasonic ignites a building boom in its vicinity, opportunities may grow at that point, and there may be a more substantial impact. I think we are currently very well-positioned to take advantage of any additional impact that Panasonic may have in terms of housing people in Shawnee, visiting our restaurants and our business establishments.
Okay. Same question to you, Reverend Murphy.
Well, I think the Panasonic plant will obviously have regional effects, and as Mr. Jenkins said, we're going to be in competition with all of our neighbors. We have to find a way to make this the attractive place for workers to want to live. And to do that, we have to have a key strategy that will be attainable housing, and this is for both buyers and those who are renters by choice. Some people don't want the responsibility of owning a house. The DeSoto manager's already, the city manager's already mentioned that he has concerns about affordability in the area. And Panasonic, we know, is going to open in phases, so I think we need to be prepared for the variety of housing options and amenities that have quick access to the roads and highways. And if we do this right, we can capture more sales tax. This would otherwise flow to other places, but if we can keep them in Shawnee, we also have that tax base. But we know that the only way to get restaurants and shops to come to an area is to have enough people in that area to support them. So we're going to have to be decisive in what we plan to do and come up with a ready plan for this destination, because it will be competitive. I think we can boost the local economy, potentially broaden our tax base, which helps all of us, and then secure the future of what development is going to be in Western Shawnee.
Okay. Thank you. Next question, staying with you, Reverend Murphy, kind of nearby to neighboring DeSoto. What do you see as the growth trajectory of the K7 corridor? What types of development do you expect to see in that area?
Well, I think K7 and Panasonic are hand in hand. That whole area is going to be important, and there's actually a thoughtful, strategic approach to the K7 corridor, again, in our Achieve Shawnee. And we're going to have to collaborate with KDOT and the Mid-America Regional Council and our neighboring communities to be successful in this area. So while we're in competition with them at times with Panasonic, we also then have to work together to build the K7 corridor in a way that works as a seamless area. We need proper administration of the improvement district, and we have to figure out wise allocation for our areas that are undeveloped. I think we could dedicate areas to industrial, not industry, well, industry, too, industrial, commercial, and residential zoning. We need a balance to what's going to happen in that area, and while this is not popular with some people, I think we need residential areas with low-density, single-family, medium-density, and high-density multifamily, and mixed-use areas. It isn't just about growth, but it's about sustainable and well-planned development that will last into the next couple of decades, and I think we can shape that corridor to be really vibrant and inclusive.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Jenkins?
Yep. For the K7 corridor, it was my idea to conduct a traffic study of the K7 corridor. As expansion continues, we will need better data to produce sound decisions on new developments. I also envision a geomorphologic study to provide some better information on what types of new developments can be done. We have a lot of rock and topographic issues that would impact on new proposals, and we could use that kind of info to make good decisions. For those of you that have been observing some of the recent events in Western Shawnee, you've seen a strong pushback from residents when it comes to proposed apartment developments. It is a difficult balancing act at the present time with finding common ground between honoring our citizens and their dislike of apartments, and developers are attempting to bring their product to Shawnee. At this time, I agree there's a lack of guidance for developers seeking to present such proposals in the K7 corridor. I have been working with the new city manager and city council members to make needed revisions to the city comprehensive plan that will accurately depict the vision for development in this area. We hope to address this concern as soon as possible.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. And staying with you, Mr. Jenkins, question six. The city has experienced exciting growth in downtown Shawnee recently. What do you see as the next opportunities to keep this area growing and vibrant?
Well, right now, we're hitting on all cylinders with downtown redevelopment. It is becoming a destination. We have caught the attention of other cities in the metro, and businesses are now calling us about opportunities in our downtown. There are several new restaurants that are expressing interest in downtown as we speak. We have added McLean's Bakery, the Aztec Theater, the District Core House, Graphic Measures, Wild Child, Transport Brewery, Service Brewery, Friction Brewery, Mother Clucker, new retail behind Mother Clucker, revitalization of State Farm Office to Retail Office, Shawnee Auto being renovated to be a new restaurant, Marigold Plaza being totally renovated with the purpose of a new quality restaurant. A vacant enterprise leasing building is being repurposed as a restaurant. So all these new proposals are coming in. I'm very excited about what we've been able to do with our partnership with our economic development team, with our private investors, and support from the city council, and assisting the small business with, in some cases, grants. And we have granted a number of these locations dollars from the city council in order to make their improvements to their buildings. The outlook is good for continued progress and energizing and revitalizing downtown as an area draw and as an economic engine for this community. We've been talking about improving our commercial side in this community for a long time. Well, some of us are actually doing it, so it's happening. We're actually getting something done, instead of BSing about it. And in fact, this downtown is one of the projects I've been very focused on and very engaged in with the downtown partnership and all, and with these developers. I've been working hand in hand with them as well. So we're making huge progress, and I think we're going to, that may help, I hope it helps, to relieve some of the tax burden on our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Same question to you, Reverend Murphy. Would you like me to repeat it?
No. Downtown is prospering and growing. I've been to a lot of the new things that are in downtown, and it's great, but we need to continue to grow, and I think it's a multifaceted thing. We still do have room for specialty shops and those restaurants, both family-friendly and high-end. I think they will add a lot to what we've got. I also think we could take advantage of our history. We hear so often that we are the small-town feel and the hometown with heart. Well, why not have a walking tour for people that takes them from Shawneetown 1929 to our old buildings to hear the history of them, on to the territorial governor's mansion, and maybe the little pocket cemetery where Chief Blue Jacket is buried? We have a lot we can offer people in a new and novel way, and I don't think that we can talk about the downtown area without also looking at the surrounding neighborhoods. Some of those are federally designated opportunity zones. Some of the houses are really aging and need help, but if we could enhance our older neighborhoods, we could make them more walkable to downtown so people could enjoy them. And we can do this by improving infrastructure with creative ways to focus on stormwater drainage, sidewalks, and again, making it pedestrian, safe, and friendly. With careful planning, I think we could do this without damaging the character of our older neighborhoods, and it would make that entire area fit together better.
Okay. Thank you. And Reverend Murphy, sticking with you on this next question. A top issue for all employers, public or private, is the need for a qualified workforce. What role do you see the city of Shawnee playing in attracting qualified workers and/or addressing some of the barriers for employees, such as childcare, entertainable housing?
Well, the role of the city government is to make this the very best community possible for our residents and our businesses. In order to attract the workers, first, we have to attract the businesses. They have to have someplace to be. And I go back to listening more effectively to the citizens and considering the input that we gathered for Imagine Shawnee and Achieve Shawnee. And this means acknowledging the importance of our teachers, firefighters, retirees, new graduates, and even our own Palouse, who may not be able to afford to buy a house but need someplace to rent to live here in Shawnee. We need to invest in recreation facilities, support our public art, preserve our history, maybe with that walking tour, and offer cultural experiences. We can make this more appealing as a place to work and live. Childcare is critical. I know. I've been there. I went through the same thing when I was a single mom. And the federal COVID funding is about to run out, but there are state grants available. And maybe we need to find a new way for our chamber and our faith partnership to work together, to look at other options for daycare locations and a better use of special-use permits for in-home daycare. If we do that, we can benefit our workers, and it benefits all of us.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Jenkins, would you like me to repeat the question?
No. I think the job of addressing barriers for potential employees is not an integral part of the agenda. It's not a city's responsibility to do that. What our responsibility is to facilitate those opportunities that do arise, however, and to remove any barriers from regulatory standpoint and that sort of thing that would impede these types of facilities, childcare, and so on, from coming to Shawnee. And I think we've done that. We've been very, we've really reached out to these kinds of operations and facilities and brought them into Shawnee. I know I've done ribbon cutting on a number of them myself, and I think we've done a good job in that area. It's kind of interesting listening across the aisle, they're, "We're doing all those things that are being recommended that we do." I'm just kind of sitting here, but my mind's kind of clicking, "Well, we're doing that, we're doing that." Yeah, I just went on a tour of Shawnee this very last year. Our Shawneetown 1929 director took all of us on a tour of all the downtown, explained where the buildings came from, who owned them, and talked, "We're actually doing it." where the buildings came from, who owned them, and talked, we're actually doing it. And I think that's the difference of what this council's been able to do. This is a council that does it instead of talking about it. I think that's been a really big improvement.
Okay, thank you, sir. Next question, sticking with you, Mr. Jenkins. What would you say is Shawnee community's competitive advantages as it relates to the location of a business?
We have some tremendous advantages here in Shawnee that are extremely marketable. We have a very active and capable chamber, that's one. I give kudos to our folks that do that. They reach out very well, and they retain very well. We're doing some good stuff. We also have an incredibly key location for transportation with our proximity to K-7, K-10, I-35, I-435, easy access to I-70. Wow, what a central node to be in. We're astride all these great transportation routes, and it's fantastic. Even once located business here, we know that they got accessibility. Not only that, but we have access to the airport and rail facilities. We have a business-friendly staff that facilitates the process for new business development. Our demographics are great. We got, boy, you look at the demographic of Shawnee and the educational level in this community and their quality of staff to draw on for businesses, it's outstanding. So I think we got a great labor pool we can offer up as well. So I think we have some good things. If you deal with our staff, I get constant feedback from a number of businesses saying, "I really enjoyed working with your city staff." They just removed all the barriers, they worked with a hand in glove, it was great. Thank you so much for treating businesses this way. So, you know, I think we get kudos in that area quite frankly, and I think that does promote our business expansion and retention. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Reverend Murphy?
Well, we're in agreement on so much of that that happens because we do have a highly educated workforce. We have an excellent school system. It is a draw to this area. And we actually have higher-than-average wages with our lifestyle. Everybody loves the lifestyle here. We keep talking about our small-town charm and how great it is. We also have all of the things that Mr. Jenkins mentioned. We're also the first stop coming in from the airport on 435 when you hit Johnson County. And we have educational opportunities all around us, Rockhurst, Adala, UMKC, the KU campuses, and our Johnson County Community College. All of these things do make this an attractive place, and I will agree, kudos to our chamber for all that they do. They are attractive to businesses, and so is our comprehensive plan, as long as we stick to that until such time as there is a new one in place. But sometimes, the way we're using our plan, we are scaring off developers. We have opportunities for business along K-7. We've talked about the K-7 and the Panasonic, about commercial and residential areas. And I think if we could offer housing for people that make less than $50,000 a year, we would be sought after. But as long as we have a plan and have developers that come in to use that plan, and then the council suddenly tells them no, I feel like we're looking at Charlie Brown and Lucy pulling away the football.
All right, thank you. And sticking with you Reverend Murphy, next question. What role, if any, do you believe the city should play in economic development to bring jobs and capital investment to the community?
I think our role comes from the collaboration we have between our five-star rated chamber, our Economic Development Council, Visit Shawnee, the city staff, and our Planning Commission. They work as a team, all while adhering to our plans for the benefit of the city. When necessary, I think we should be willing to offer incentives, as we have done in the past, to facilitate development by attracting businesses to the right places at the right time. And the incentives, I don't think are just financial, but about creating an environment where businesses can thrive. That's why we need to adhere to our guidelines, make sure we're clear in explaining to developers what they can and can't do. I also believe we should rejoin the National League of Cities. A member of our council recently said from the dais that our council and planning commission need to be better educated. Well, if we went back to being a member of the National League of Cities, we could take advantage of their educational opportunities and the guidance they can offer.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Jenkins?
Yeah, we have a role in presenting a good business climate. I think that's the number-one responsibility of the city government, is present a good climate for business to function and operate. We need to support our economic development team, which I think we do in, do a good job of supporting the development team. We need to reach out and build partnerships, and that's something I do on a daily basis. I'm fortunate, in fact, that I'm retired, so I don't have to go to work every day, and I'm out doing a lot of other stuff. I'm out walking, talking to business people, I'm out working with our economic development team, I'm out coordinating with our people over at City Hall. So I've had a lot of advantage of doing some things that perhaps not every city council person has the freedom to do. So that's not something that just makes me great, but it's just something I have that opportunity, and I'm able to do it. So I appreciate that. But we need to be able to provide incentives to desirable businesses. I mean, when you talk about passing on incentives, I'm a free-market guy, and I believe in letting the market do its job. But every now and then, there's something that we really want, our citizens really want, and maybe we're willing to reach out to them and say, "Hey, we'll give you some incentives in order to come here and be a part of our community," especially when you're faced with unusual problems, such as just some difficult topography. There's increased cost of renovation, and that's what we've run into quite a bit downtown. Because we've heard the downtown feel mentioned, that we want to keep our hometown feeling. We want that hometown feeling, and we're trying to develop and keep that hometown feel at the same time, so it's a little bit of a delicate balancing act, and we've been real careful not to make it concrete and glass. That costs more money to go in and renovate those old buildings and maintain our downtown feel, and we've gone to great effort to maintain it and keep it that way. And that's why we have given some incentives in order to make that happen that way. And we also need to have staff and regulations, our regulations and codes, that facilitate and support that development.
Okay, thank you. Final question, it's part of the Q and A section, and you'll have an opportunity here in a little bit to make a closing statement, but keeping with you, Mr. Jenkins. What do you believe most distinguishes you from your opponent in this race, making you the best suited to serve?
Well, I've got a couple of points here I thought I might want to share, and that was, one, I have a record of achievement. I'm a proven entity, and I have demonstrated that I can produce. I can reach out, and I've been a bridge. I've been a bridge in a lot of ways. My 29 years of experience on the Planning Commission of City Council have matured to a point where my effectiveness in getting things done and bringing people together is at a very high level. I feel that I have been this bridge and a point of entry for the business community and our citizens. I work effectively with our city staff, our economic development team, and fellow council members. The proof is in the product. I believe my record clearly shows the effectiveness of my effort on behalf of the city. My opponents even mentioned a number of things that are going super. There's a reason they're going super, okay? I have a long track record demonstrating wisdom, listening skills, flexibility in forging solutions, and bringing people together on critical issues. My background, my life experiences, and my commitments to our citizens and our community bring good things to the position. I think those things really add up, and they're really important. When you're turning over your taxes to somebody, I think you want somebody, you want a level of competency there that you feel comfortable with, and I think I provide that level of competency, and I certainly appreciate your vote to support that.
Okay, all right, thank you. Reverend Murphy, what distinguishes you?
Well, I've been years of experience in budgeting, personnel management, and mediation for for-profit, not-for-profit, public, and community organizations. And I think I bring a fresh perspective, new ideas, and a new set of eyes to the workings of the city, as well as a willingness to function as part of a nonpartisan city council in the way that was actually intended, but we have gotten away from. I'm not constrained by the entanglements or friendships of 30 years in the city government. I'm not a politician. I'm not beholden to any special interest groups. I'm not controlled by a political party, and I recognize the role played by the citizens when they participate in surveys and focus groups and are kept up to date by council members. But I haven't been kept up to date. In the 19 years I've lived here, I have never had any direct contact from council members, no meetings, no newsletters, nothing to tell me what's actually going on. And I recognize that in my years of training as an experienced listener and mediator, that I come in without a preconceived agenda, and I want to hear both sides of issues and work for the people. And I think most of all, I would like to return respect and dignity to the council chamber.
Okay, thank you. So now we'll move into closing statements. For these, each candidate will have two minutes to make some closing remarks. Sticking with you Reverend Murphy.
What? We'll let her pick her pop up over there. I love Shawnee. It's a great place to live, Old Shawnee days, Moonlight Market, Farmer's Market. It's what we like about Shawnee, and I think we can all agree that those are what make this a special place. I've been knocking doors and having front door and front porch conversations recently throughout Ward Two, and people express surprise that I am actually at their door, talking to them myself, that I'm in person, that I'm asking their opinions, and that I want to hear their concerns. And they are concerned. They are concerned about the exodus of professional staff and what it's going to cost the city in money and time to replace them. They are concerned about the negative newspaper articles that have made us look bad in the rest of the area. They're concerned about being looked down upon if they are renters. Seniors want to be able to downsize and stay in Shawnee if there's something available. Our young adults want to be able to come back after college and live here, and then maybe find a home someday to buy and raise their families. But that can only happen if we really recognize all of our residents and all of their varying needs. Having a long-term vision is of no use if we don't follow it. And I've said this already, but it bears repeating, we need to follow Achieve Shawnee until and unless it is revisited, revised, and replaced. Letting one small group or neighborhood decide what's best for the city ignores everyone else. We need a fresh start, new ideas, new insight, and a council willing to listen and respect one another, the staff, and the people of Shawnee.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Jenkins?
Yeah, those are some interesting comments I just heard. First of all, there's a very high comfort level between the council members on this city council. We get along extremely well. There's been a whole lot of stuff fabricated out there by, unfortunately, by the Shawnee Mission Post, which I'm losing respect for. I had respect for them in the beginning. They seem to come out with some fairly straightforward and honest reporting, but that's kind of gone downhill, I'm sorry to say, because that's really an important source of information for people, so it would be really helpful if they didn't do that. For example, this exodus of staff, that's total BS. I talked to my city manager, and we went to our HR department, said, "What's our normal attrition rate?" We're right on target with normal attrition. Somehow it's been blown into some kind of problem now. Did we lose some key people? Yes, we lost some key people. We lost the city manager, and that was a city manager that would not work with the city council. When we said we wanted to cut taxes, he didn't want to cut taxes. It was just everything we did, he was an obstruction rather than a team member with the council. And you notice when the assistant city manager left, she said this council was not progressive enough, okay? Well, no, we're not progressives. I'll be frank with that. Are we progressive? And thought, yes, but would be classified as progressive, I would say no. But there is a very good and strong working relationship in our city council. So somebody out there is trying to attack the city council for whatever their purposes or reasons, but I have to tell you, there's a lot of smoke there, and there's no fire. And I do need to say also in closing that many of the comments brought up by my opponent, we are doing them. I think I've illustrated multiple times, those things are already being done. We're doing the parks. We're doing the infrastructure. We're doing the public safety. We're doing the downtown. They've been working very hard on these things, and credit needs to be given where credit is due. We've been doing that work. So why we suddenly, why she thinks she should have come in and do a better job of doing the things that we're doing really well, it's kind of confusing to me. I don't really get that. Maybe you do, I don't know, but it's just, it's pretty frustrating to sit here and listen to some of that stuff, but we really worked hard for our community. Thanks.
All right, thank you. And with that, that concludes our forum for Shawnee City Council Board Two. Thank you, candidates, both Mr. Eric Jenkins and Reverend Jeanne Murphy, for your participation today. For more information about these candidates and all candidates, videos of these and other candidate forums and advancing voting detail, advanced voting details, visit www.votejoko.com. And please share this voting resource with your colleagues, family, and friends. On behalf of the Shawnee Chamber of Commerce, thank you for everyone for taking advantage of this important opportunity to learn about the candidates, and best of luck to both of you in your campaign. Thank you all.
Thanks.